Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Wokingham Borough Council Planning Committee for 30th of March. Before we get on to the main part of the committee, I just need to cover a few key points. As you'll see, we're using a public address system. Please ensure your mobile phones are switched off or onto silent. The proceedings, as you will see, are filmed and I'm reliably assured that the whole film of tonight's event should be up on YouTube by lunchtime tomorrow, if not earlier. You'll see from the camera position that those who are going to speak are recorded, but if there's any speaker who doesn't wish to be recorded, they can ask for that to be the case. But the planning committee is made up of nine elected members, borough councillors, all of whom are here tonight, and we're supported and advised by professional council officers. On my far right is Mary Severin, who's the borough solicitor, who's here to give us any legal advice that we may need. Next to her is Colin Okemunig, who's the Democratic Services Officer and clerk to tonight's committee. Next to him is councillor Tim Holton, who's the Vice-Cabinet. I'm Simon Wicks, the chairman of the committee. On my left is Mark Cupid, who's the delivery programme director. And next to him is Chris Easton, who's the Service Manager of Highways Development, who's here to give us advice on any matters relating to highways and transport. And the planning officer who will be presented tonight is Emmy Circuit, who's sat on the left there. Just a couple of procedural issues. The planning committee is quasi-judicial. We have formal set procedures in conduct and would ask you to cooperate fully with those. Firstly, the planning officer will present the planning applications. Then I will call in turn those who have pre-registered to speak. And if you come forward to the table in front, press the button on the microphone and we'll all be able to hear what you have to say. The time loop for each category of speakers is six minutes and that time will be enforced, so please try and get your message, key messages across and don't leave your critical punchline at the very end.
Do you mind speaking a bit louder so that people can hear?
Okay, all right. Can we get the volume up any higher?
I could try. We have put it up as high as we can.
Okay, if I could carry on then. Members of the committee are interested in the quality of what you have to say rather than the quantity. And I must emphasise, only those that are pre-registered to speak may speak. No others, including town or parish councillors, agents, applicants, objectors or supporters are permitted to address the committee or ask questions or interrupt the meeting. Following the planning officer's presentation and the comments of all those registered to speak, the planning committee members will consider, question and seek verification for the application and hopefully reach a decision which may or might not agree with the officer's recommendation. Finally, a very important reminder, we are the local planning authority and our role is to determine valid planning applications using local and national policy. It is not the role of this committee to suggest alterations to schemes, whether they're a good idea, whether they're needed, whether they're of value for money, whether they're too costly, whether there are alternative uses. As I say, our role is the planning committee. The decisions on Elmsfield were made some time ago at a public meeting of the council's executive. And just to summarise, I would describe it as rather like applying for a driving licence. The fact that you have a driving licence does not require you to own or drive a car. Our role here is to see, does this meet current national and local planning guidelines? So, without further ado, I'm going to ask Mark Cupid to introduce this item and just give us a little bit of history. Sorry, but I just need to check a couple of things. Firstly, there are no apologies for this meeting and we have minutes for the previous meeting. No member has contacted me about those, so I shall sign those as a true and accurate record. And there are no applications to be deferred or withdrawn. But I believe we have a declaration of interest. Other than anyone else, Rochelle is indicating anyone else have any interest to do. Rochelle, over to you. Could you speak quite loudly?
As a member of the Liberal Democratic Party, I have in the past expressed sympathetic support for the alternative scheme for Elmsfield. I do however have an open mind about the application before us this evening and intend only making a final decision once they've heard all the representations on this scheme. And as Simon has said, I cannot consider finance, I cannot consider anything else other than the planning rules.
Okay, thank you Rochelle. So, straight across to Mark Cupid.
Thank you, Chairman. I've been working at Woking since 2006, so I think I've probably seen about half of the history of this discussion about regenerating the town. Looking back, I think there's probably about 20 years' worth of discussion and events that have happened in terms of generating policy proposals and consultations. So I think it's something that the town's pretty well versed in. In 96, we adopted a development brief around Rose Street and it was basically looking at the area of Peach Place and the Waitrose development. Following on from that, in 2002, 2005 and 2006, a company called Rock, which is led by a local businessman called Roger Smith, submitted three applications for Peach Place. Obviously, none of those were proceeded with, largely based on viability. I think at the time that I arrived in Woking, there was quite a lot of concern about the value of those schemes and the fact that the district was continuing to grow based on the policy projections for housing formation, lack of infrastructure and a lack of services to go with that. So discussion centred around the thought of creating an 18-hour economy in the town, trying to make it a destination town centre with more floor space and more floor space of appropriately sized retail units. And certainly something that'd be suitable for the town. And I think irrespective of whether or not people disagree with the means by which that's done, I think those principles have been something that's had quite a lot of support. Following the news that Rock had walked away from the scheme and were disposing of their assets, Wokingham Borough had to take a view as whether or not to take a leap and in the end they stepped in to take a leap on regeneration. And that followed some planning work over a new master plan, supplementary planning document for Wokingham, which was wide public consultation. And in 2010, we adopted a master plan supplementary planning document. And when Emmy goes through her presentation, she'll show you what that looked like and you'll be able to see how that compares with what's currently proposed tonight for Elmsfield. More recent history, 2012, Elmsfield, not Elmsfield, Peach Place Phase One was agreed, that's now completed and occupied. 2013, there are a couple of applications that came in for Elmsfield and Peach Place that were withdrawn. 2014, Peach Place Phase Two is consented and preparations are in place to move that forward. 2015, Carnival Pool, an application consented with the Muffet Store car park moving forward. So quite clearly since the time that the Borough Council has become involved in the site, there have been some substantive activities rather than just discussion. And tonight is the final piece of the first wave of development for the members of this committee and for the public to scrutinise in terms of a decision for Elmsfield.
Thank you, Mark. So we now go straight across to Emmy Circuit in 10% detail of the application.
Thank you. The application site extends from Wellington Road in the south up to Shute End in the north. So it includes Elmsfield, that's the play area, the tennis court and the former kitchen pub on the western side of Elms Road and then the land around the former council offices in the eastern side of the road. It also includes the Paddocks Car Park, the area of public open space, the access road to the Paddocks Car Park and the parking and landscaped areas around the council offices, although not the council offices themselves. Before I go on to the detail of the proposals, I will just talk a little bit more about the policy framework for the application. Mark's already talked about the long history of seeking to regenerate the town centre and the thought of acknowledged need to try to do something. And the evidence base for the core strategy, which is the spatial planning framework for the borough, recognises, the retail studies that underpinned it showed that the town was losing trade to other surrounding settlements and needed to do something to make it attractive, to meet the needs of both existing residents and as the town expands with the residential development that's taking place in the borough in particular, more than south Wokingham. So that led to this policy that sets out the aim for Wokingham Town Centre to strengthen shopping, increasing the amount of shopping. And the specialist guidance also gave advice about the type of shop and accommodation needed. A lot of the shops are old and small, so I don't attract the type of retailers you need to support a vibrant town centre and attract people to visit it. Also, looking at number four on that list, sort of having a range of uses because the trend is going towards having not just purely shopping trips, but trips that involve other activities as well, meeting friends, having something to eat or drink, maybe a trip to enjoy entertainment or something like that. So expanding the range of facilities that the town centre offers as well, while respecting and conserving its historic quality and interest, which is what makes it different and attractive compared to other surrounding towns. And also, it's not just about the buildings, but also about the public spaces within the town centre. So building on this development plan policy, we have the supplementary planning document that Mark has mentioned and it includes a lot of analysis about the town centre, about its strengths and weaknesses. And using that information comes up with a retail and land use strategy for the town centre, which evolves around two sort of retail quarters with an anchor store within each one. Important thing about the anchor stores being that they're uses that attract people to the town centre and then because their destinations encourage football around the town centre, which is why this approach with one at sort of either end of the retail circuit is important. So you have the one around Peach Place, the development that already has consent with Marks and Spencer's as the anchor store. And then at the southern end of the town, a new anchor store suggested down on the corner of Wellington Road. And going along this side, I've mentioned that it's also, the strategy's also about public spaces and there is also guidance about the public space hierarchy within the supplementary planning document. So it identifies existing public spaces, ways in which they could be improved and also proposes some new spaces within the town centre. So you have different types of spaces performing different functions, the marketplace, which is very much the sort of silly part of the town, new space within the Peach Place development. And then in terms of the park, the most important, Elmsfield. And also there are smaller gardens. And I think what's very clear in the supplementary planning document is that although Elmsfield is very much a valued resource, there is scope for improvement of it and that to deliver the benefits to the town centre overall, it would be necessary to accept something of a reduction in the size to be offset by qualitative improvements. And that comes very right from the supplementary planning document to inform the current proposal. Moving on now to the master plan proposed within the application, and I think you will immediately see the strong parallels between what is proposed and the drawing I just showed previously, which comes from the supplementary planning document. You've got the road connecting through along the western side of the site from Wellington Road up to Shute End, with residential development lining it overlooking the park and also on the northern side. Then at the heart of it, the consolidated open space, and I'll come back in a minute more to the qualities of that. And then on the eastern side, backing on to Denmark Street and down to the Carnival Pool roundabout, you've got a proposed hotel, which you can see in yellow there, a new food store, which is proposed as the anchor store that I mentioned in the supplementary planning document. And then residential and retail development wrapping around that to screen its bulk and integrate it better, so it has active frontiers on all sides. And then to the north of that, in orange, you see the cinema proposed within the development with other town centre uses, so there could be shops, cafes, restaurants, so sort of uses on the ground floor and residential above. Coming back to the public open space, as I mentioned before, one of the critical things is qualitative improvement to it. And as you'll have seen on the aerial photograph, the existing space is somewhat fragmented. You have the area that's very well used on the western side of the road, an area that's probably less well used and it's almost a figure of an H shape with a pinch point between the former developed site and the old job centre, sort of almost dividing it into two. And that's the area that's primarily used when there are events taking place in the town centre. And then the smaller area north of the paddocks access. So what is proposed here is more consolidated area of open space, yes reduced in size, but designed specifically to meet all the functions and needs that the current space does and to do it better than it does now. So the actual area of sort of equipped play space would be larger than is currently the case. The details that have been included in the application show how qualitative improvement in that play experience could be delivered, but they're not finalised at the moment. So they've demonstrated that that improvement can take place. There will now be a further public consultation taking place by the applicant team to refine those details and get to something that's specific to the site and works really well as the destination play area within the town centre. The other area of sort of concern in particular is the holding of events and how the space might host them. And there's two aspects of that and I'm not sure how, it doesn't show up very clearly at all, unfortunately, but these two drawings, you'll see on the left, you've got the layout, no, you might just make out this is four dark squares along the footpath network within the park. And that is showing how it could be laid out for events like markets and fairs and things that currently take place on open space. And on the right hand side, it shows how marquee for things like the Wokingham Food Fair could be accommodated. And this layout has been devised in consultation with the groups who lay on these sort of town centre events to ensure that it meets their needs and can function well, while the other areas of the park, like the play area, are still in use. And also, it's proposed to improve the infrastructure, so there will be things like power and water laid on to help with the running of those events effectively and look for them to increase in frequency and/or size in future. I'll now move on to one of the other key aspects of the application, which is the sort of design of the development itself. And one of the key concerns that has been expressed is about the scale of development and in particular the height of building. And I've just started off with this section because I think it is quite useful in explaining some of the principles behind the design of the commercial buildings within the scheme. Both the commercial and residential aspects have been designed based on analysis of the character of the town centre, looking at the things that are characteristic and trying to incorporate them into new modern buildings that meet modern needs but still reflect the historic character of the town. And what you see here is the mid-youth building, which includes the cinema. So you'll see the blue on the ground floor would be the town centre uses like shops, restaurants and so on that I've mentioned. Then you've got the entrance to the cinema on the ground floor, because that doesn't add much in terms of vitality and activity on the ground floor. The cinema screens themselves would be on the first floor along with a bar overlooking the park. And then also on the first, second and third floors, there would be a number of residential units. But rather than extend them in a sort of solid bank along the edge of the building, they're broken up with roof terraces and private amenity spaces in between. So what that means is that it might lead to a much more fragmented form without the bulk that you would get if you had just a solid building of that height and you have the gables and features reflecting the character of the town centre. The other thing to mention here is that the height in relation to the development within the conservation area has been looked at and the scale of the development actually falls towards Denmark Street plus the way the levels work, the level of the land will be reduced, so that will again reduce the impact when viewed from the conservation area. But what I'm going to do now, you already have a large proportion of the application drawings within the application pack, they've been readily available, but I'm going to focus on the computer-generated images, which I think give a better impression of the play and the development and how it will work in practice. So starting with that commercial mid-youth block I've just been talking about, this is the view looking from sort of where you come out of F. Shaw Court and Alexandra Court at the moment, looking along the new development north of the food store and Wellington Road. So you can see the gables with the gaps in between that I've just been speaking about and also the hard-furled landscape area on the park, which forms part of the sort of usable space that would be useful for markets and events within the town. This is another view towards the corner with the cinema on the ground and first floor there and then residential uses above looking over the play area. So you can see how that would relate to the uses within the building and also help integrate the development into the existing town centre. And then a slightly longer view looking across the park from the new Elms Road, again showing those gates with the breaks in between. And also, within this, giving an indication of the landscaping and showing sort of the existing trees and also the proposed new planting. And just to be clear, this is showing the, all these, show the landscaping about 10 years into the development. So the trees, it gives an impression when they're, trees are shown slightly larger than they will be at time of planting, but sort of not within the too distant future. Another view here then, you see the food store on the right, the end of the mid-youth block with the retail on the ground floor and residential uses above. And then looking through to the juice head on the corner of Landbury Road there. And here, another view from the area just next to Virgin Active, looking back across the park towards the new residential backing on to Albert Road and Park Avenue. And the view, what I haven't mentioned particularly, is the sort of related proposals on the Carnival Pool site, which is where one of the key town centre car parks has approval and is due to be delivered next year. And one of the important things within that scheme is that there would be a strong pedestrian link leading through to the Elmsfield development. So you see here, there'll be a crossing leading from that, sort of directly connecting the car parking with the development at Elmsfield. And then here, looking at the hotel on the corner of Denmark Street and Wellington Road. And I think this shows quite well how you've got the high-up view forming a landmark on the corner, but the design of the hotel breaks up its math, so you have the different material used on the upper level, the sort of indents within the elevations and then different treatment on the ground floor as well. So it's a sort of simple, modern design that picks up some youth from the town centre without trying to sort of mimic older buildings in the town centre. And also there on the right, you can see the development wrapping around into Denmark Street with the terrace of smaller houses, reflecting the scale of the existing terrace on the opposite side of Denmark Road and then rising up slightly higher to the corner where the entrance into the new development from Denmark Street would be. And then looking along that section from the opposite direction, so if you're just outside the library, on the right, you've got the entrance leading in directly to Elmsfield with the retail units on the ground floor and flats above. And then the houses I just mentioned leading down towards the Carnival Pool roundabout and the hotel on the corner. And then this image is of Block A, which is the end block on the border of the new Elms Road, looking back towards the park with a number of retained trees along the Wellington Road boundary and some new planting as well. And actually showing that there'd be quite a fair degree of screening, so the buildings beyond would be sort of softened by being viewed through that park area. And then a view of the new town being, looking back down towards Wellington Road. And one thing that was particularly requested during the member briefing last week was more information on the relationship with the pavilions on the opposite side of Wellington Road. So you see here, Block A at the end with the terrace houses to the right of it. And then on the far left of the picture is the development at the pavilion, so you get an impression of the scale. There's about 28 metres separation between them as well. So you've got the gardens at the pavilion and within the coverage of Block A and the road in between as well. Just another view of the development along the north side of the park then. And a lot of CGI, this is the section leading up towards Shute End, where the development is scaled down slightly, a little bit of a more intimate character along the road there up towards the council offices. Turning now to the impact upon residential amenity, I think there are three main areas where there are adjoining residential properties at the moment, which will be affected to some extent by the development. One is Denmark Street and the row of cottages that I've already mentioned. And you've got the development at Ellison Way and Elms Road to the northern side and then Park Avenue and Albert Road along the western edge. I think these have all been addressed in a fair degree of detail in the committee report. The one thing that was mentioned outstanding in relation to Denmark Street was the final test to confirm that the lighting impact of the development opposite those houses was acceptable and that's been received now and confirms that there wouldn't be an unacceptable lot of light to those properties as a result of the development. Generally throughout, the separation distances meet the council's minimum standards and will not have an unacceptable impact on residential amenity, although of course there would be a change to the situation as it is at the moment. The area which we particularly looked at during the site visit was the relationship with Nine and Forty in Albert Road and members asked for a drawing with the distances marked on. I'm not sure how clearly that shows up. What it shows is the layout of those two properties from recent applications that have been submitted on them. So you can see the layout of, we discussed with the primary outlook to the sort of front and rear of both dwellings, but with some windows within the side elevations. And that the majority of the relationships would be considered as back to front and meet the required separation distances. Just moving on to parking, I won't say a great deal about this, I think the key thing is there is a lot of parking within the application site, but the strategy for the parking provision in the town centre has already been looked at. The requirements have been based on looking at existing supply, the increase in floor space throughout the town centre from this and the other developments that already have been commissioned. And the new car park, which has been commissioned at the Carnival Pool, has been designed to provide adequate parking for the town centre into the future. And the assumptions that were made about the level of loss of parking space within this development and what would be provided are in line with the, with what is actually proposed. So there's no change to the situation with regards to that car park being able to meet the need. Finally then, I will move on to the members' update. I'm afraid there's a few things I need to run through quickly in there, just starting on the first page, two processes and forms of verification, just to confirm that the site is split between Henbrook and Westcott Ward, you know, as mentioned in the header to the report. The recommendation on page 13 of the report and a couple of typing errors, it should be paragraph 31 rather than 32 and or 28th of January rather than the 18th. Just an update to the report, during the course of the application, there was some amendment- During the course of the application, there were some amendments to the design of the proposed houses to reduce the number of top floor windows, to limit them just to secure glazed bathroom windows, to try to reduce the impact on neighbouring properties to an extent. And although the report was based on the revised layout, I just hadn't updated that paragraph to reflect that. Another just clarification, some of the site-wide layout drawings seem to suggest that the garages and garden stores within the development would be multi-story, which isn't what's proposed. So to confirm that they would be single-story and condition two needs to be updated just to reflect that. And the additional daylight factor test in relation to Denmark Street neighbouring properties, I've already mentioned. A couple of additional consultation responses that have been received. Royal Markship Final Rescue have confirmed that they would like a condition just to secure emergency water supplies, which has been added, but have no other comments. The majority is by safety provisions issued without the underbuilding regulations. And we've also had comments from Crown Prevention Design Advisor, Thames Valley Police, who have no objection subject to conditions, looking at things like secure by design, which is really just refining some of the detail of the layout and the design within the buildings. There are two additional representations commenting on the revised plans. One from a neighbouring resident and one from Great Lambert Residents' Association. So in summary, disappointment expressed that the comments haven't all the comments may haven't been taken on board in the amendments. But I should be clear that the amendment was requested specifically in relation to neighbouring properties. That the amendments hadn't improved the situation with regard to the impact on neighbouring properties. The daylight tests have not been met. And I should be clear that that the it's mentioned in the report, but the VRE guidelines have a sort of three-stage approach. And the application moved straight on to the second stage and did the more technical assessment, which showed the tests have met half of that one situation which has been confirmed since. Another comment that boundary treatment would require failing of boundary trees within the garden of 9 Albert Road. And I think that can be dealt with under condition trials. That required landscaping and boundary treatment being looked at in more detail post-determination. So that's only from the picture up there. And that there's originally been to address the impact of increased traffic on the road. But there's nothing in there to address those points and they've been dealt with in the report. There are also two other representations not related to the revised plan. One just a firm objection. And the other really important point that has already been made about taking the board's National Gardens. And in regard to that, I would just say that the application needs to be determined in line with development plan policy. And the national planning policy is a residual consideration, but the precedence is on the development plan. And then finally, moving on to revised and additional conditions. I mentioned the need to link from those drawings from the listed approved drawings for condition two. Couple of words missing from condition three and 12. And also on the secure glazing condition. That requires the sort of theme of secure glazing to be permitted and particularly in relation to neighbouring properties to make that permanently retained. Just some clarification of the servicing management plan condition, hours of delivery. And then a few additional conditions, one restricting additional windows in the upper floors in housing to prevent unattainable overlooking neighbouring properties. Some more detailed design of the roofs in some cases. The emergency water supplies that I mentioned. And condition about provision of car parking before the development comes into use. And then also I mentioned the condition recommended by the Crown Prevention Design Advisor and a couple of informative. So that leads me then to the recommendation, which is on page 13 of the agenda. Result to round planning commissions subject to three things. One is no new substantive planning issues being raised during the remainder of the consultation period. And I should make clear that that is not a consultation on the provisions. And that's a sort of technical consultation because the advertisement that originally went out referred to the development as a major development, but didn't say that it was in the consultation area and affected the setting of listing buildings. So there's no new information before the result of that. And providing no new substantive planning issues are raised, then the application can be determined at the end of that consultation period. If all the resolution is also subject to contributions to mitigate the impact the development has set out in the report and to the conditions.
Okay, thank you, Emmy. We'll now hear from all those who've been registered to speak. One thing I should just mention for benefit of the audience is that the planning committee visited the sites last week and viewed the sites from not only within the site itself, but also from Wellington Road down towards the Outfield development and also from the bottom end of Denmark Street. And of course, obviously from the area of the council buildings and from the flats in Elms Road and Ellison Way. So I think all members were already familiar with the site, but that was an opportunity for them to ensure that they were completely familiar with the scale of the proposed development versus those dwellings that are already and other buildings that are already in situ. So we now move on to, as I said, the speakers. The sequence the speakers have taken in is as follows from the council's constitution. So the first category is those from town or parish councillors. And obviously in many cases it's a town council. And we have two speakers registered to speak in. They will need to share your six minutes or manage it between you. That's Imogen Shepherd-Tobey and Andrew Waters. And would you like me to tell you when three minutes is up or will you manage your own time between you?
I think I can manage my own time.
Okay. Right, okay, straight across to, if you'd like to move up to your chair, press the grey button and we should be able to hear your contribution.
If I do this, will that be enough to tell you how to change the slide? Good evening, everybody. Workingham Town Council welcomes investment and development in the town centre. And we agree that it's much needed modernising and rejuvenating and re-modelling. Firstly, in talking about the park area, we feel that there should be more of a chicane and torrid gates at the entrance of Wellington Road. The proposed stone blocks to go down may be dangerous to cause a prick hazard. Oh, she's gone on too far. This should also do nothing to slow ciphers down or prevent children running out into the road. T65, the tree in the picture, is large and distinctive maple tree featured in the photograph. It is what's on the core, what will be on the core of the park, which is approximately 1.5 metres into the new park layout. It has been targeted for a removal. Workingham Town Council requests the tree is not removed as part of the project and we ask that it is left alone and no special provisions made for it. You'll see it survives and replaces it necessary. The same should also be considered to T60, an oak tree on the edge of the new park. We are pleased with the new size of the proposed play area, but request that a firm commitment to be made at the stage to try to provide quality play equipment that everyone can enjoy. The details of which can be decided later, but we'd like to provide an area suitable for everybody. Next slide please. Additionally, there is concern over the impact of plots on 17 and 18, of plots 17 and 18 on the existing zones of 9 and 14 Albert Road. It has been discussed that the buildings intended location are taller than any other buildings in the area, including the pavilions on Outfield Crescent. 14 Albert Road was positioned as an angle, as you can see in the picture, so it could be argued that the distance required should be front to back, not front to side. The picture of it in the front corner. Next slide please. The height of residential buildings around the park will be taller than other buildings locally. And there'll also be fears of the loss of the palace car park will not fully replace the new car park and by case by the new car park and Carnival Pool. Workingham Town Council would also like to see some concerns about the trees on the western boundary addressed. And I have a picture of them there, and I know it was mentioned to them. These are in the park but provide valuable screening for nearby residents, so excuse the boundary. Wokingham Borough Council has stated that due to the cost of the schemes, there are insufficient funds for affordable housing. CP5, the core strategy document suggests that 30% of the property should be afforded. And to quote, section 433 of the core strategy. Applications of planning permissions to which is provisioned below that is policy CP5, a viable case, but is submitted with the planning application as an open book appraisal of development finances. This demonstrates the proposal is clearly not viable. While some financial information has been revealed to us, it's expected and it is expected that some contribution would be made to the overall regeneration. It still seems that Wokingham Borough Council are not following the standards required by independent land developers in the area.
Thank you very much. Now come on to Andrew Waters, good evening.
Chairman, members of the committee. Firstly, I would like to emphasise that Wokingham Town Council are supportive of this application and regard the development of Elmsfield as a critical element in the regeneration of Wokingham. As a viable retail, commercial and recreational centre, thus cementing the town's position as one of the best places to live in the country. We believe that the application before you represents a well-thought-out blend of commercial, retail, residential, recreational use, which will benefit the community as a whole and deliver much-needed additional amenities to our town. I represent the Town Council to see specifically to present the views relating to the hotel, retail and car park area and the cinema, retail and residential area, which can be described as follows. In relation to the hotel, retail and car park area, Workingham Town Council made some recommendations and pleased to note that the hotel drop-off arrangements have been updated to include a lane by on both sides of Wellington Road, that the junction of Denmark Street and Lambert Road will be upgraded to a full four on roundabout. And the design of the hotel sign will be subject to a planning condition. In relation to the cinema, residential and retail area, we appreciate the work that has been done to break up the roofline and blend the building in with the existing strip scene in Denmark Street. We also note that the relevant key policies of the adopted core strategy and managing development delivery indeed have been met. However, we are concerned that an open D2 use class on the cinema might lead to an undesirable or alternative use in the future and would request that Borough Council look at ways of restricting the hours of operation, noise level etcetera with a planning condition. In closing, we would once again like to reiterate our support for this application and look forward to the successful conclusion of this ambitious project. Mr Chairman, one final point that I feel is important to raise. We appreciate that there will be no affordable housing due to the viability of this scheme and we would accept that. However, Chairman, we would ask that the officers confirm that the independent assessment of the viability reports submitted with this application is correct in that it recommends that no affordable properties are needed to be provided.
Thank you very much. Once we've heard from all the speakers, I will seek actual clarification on that point because clearly it's a point that's already been raised by the first two speakers. But now we come on to those people who are registered to speak. And I think we've broken into two categories. We've got Mr Maynard and Mrs Kay, I think both presidents of Albert Road, I believe. Good evening. I'm going to share your three minutes. Again, are you happy to manage your other three minutes?
Yes, I'm going to do that. I'm speaking, Carol and Jim are sitting at the side.
Okay.
Fairway's Maynard will go really fast. I speak for Albert Road on the height and proximity of the proposed houses on the western edge against numbers 9 and 14. Little has been done to reduce the impact here and SBD directives are pushed to the limits and beyond. The applicants have implied that the SBD master plan allows four-story housing to surround Elmsfield. It does not. It is very clear, three-story development was anticipated with four-story in set places. The applicant's argument is that public open space supports extra, extra height, but the master plan has already taken this into account. The master plan also says it's important to reflect the scale of the neighbouring properties. This slide illustrates the problem and stark contrast with the planning policies. This vista is recognised as being important to the local character in the SBD directive. I reiterate, development should be predominantly three-story in keeping with the scale of the surrounding buildings. This statement is subject to public consultation. There is no argument from the applicant on the adverse impact. I have been advised to replant the boundary at a cost of £16,000. These proposed four-story houses are very high, 14 metres, twice the height of mine and one to two stories higher than those facing Lambert Ground, which is larger than remaining Elms Park. This CGI from number nine's bedroom window shows the extreme overlooking and loss of skyline. No BRE daylight or sun on our report has been undertaken to justify the planning officer's statement that the impact is acceptable. Also noted, proposed townhouses here have enlarged windows. The officers suggest that similar problems with the side windows in number 14 should be ignored. Again, without basis, the accommodation here is lawful, habitable, and the November planning response confirmed that such rights are right to prevail for 25 years. The council holds minimum back-to-back distance between dwellings to prevent material loss of privacy, 22 metres. This slide shows parts of the post-plan distances noticed from numbers 9 and 14. The officer considers there to be no unacceptable overlooking to number nine's rear garden lounge and bedroom windows, but proposed distance separating the windows to less than 22 metres and to the garden 17 metres. The proposed four stories overlook the boundary are overbearing and cause loss of daylight. The impact on privacy and amenity space is obviously unacceptable. Similarly to number 14, the council have not adhered to their own liberal planning directives and pushed the ground floor to 11 metres from the boundary and the upper floor to just 14 metres. To number 14's back garden, two car lengths separate the elevations to the boundary. How is this reasonable? In fact, according to many councils, it's explicitly not acceptable. Five metres per story is seen as the minimum distance to the boundary. Given the awkward relationship to Albert Road, we would ask for a better balance between the height and separation to reflect the pleasant suburban character that is recognised and valued by the EIA report. As a council-backed scheme, standard interpretation should be unquestionable. The council has volunteered that the scheme is optional. We simply ask that we consider how the acknowledged adverse impact to all residents around the park, not just Albert Road, can be reduced as promised and a coherent policy would help.
Thank you very much. Well done. Good afternoon, our inter-hunters and Mel Horton. Again, are you going to manage your time or between you?
Mel Horton, she's been detained, she's actually a right back for Germany, so I've got her script. So I'm going to try and squeeze it all in. Unfortunately, I should be speaking faster as well and raising my hand when I'm doing slides. I'll watch you change the slide, sorry. Okay, we're here tonight to represent the people of Wokingham who want to object in their thousands to this planning application and who want to reserve much love and where we use open space. According to the case officer, 244 objections and terms were lodged on the application with only 21 in favour. Two recent petitions against it have gained more than 1,500 signatures. And the GetReady.com poll, 83% were against this scheme. There are worrying errors and omissions in both the application and planning officer's report. Elmsfield is valued. In 2012, the council committed an independent report on the open spaces identified as only one of five parks in the entire borough that have high value and high quality. The green space directive has been ignored. Pavilion's cricket pitch development is refused on these grounds, setting a precedent. The national planning policy framework, so is permission, must be refused as feral veteran trees. In contravention of CP3, there's been no assessment of spatial arrangement and impact on residents. In these plans, there is no attempt to minimise impact and every attempt to maximise profit. Regent team has stressed that only half the park will be concreted over. The reality is the council decimated this open space leaving a fraction of what was there only 50 years ago. Paradoxically, whilst housing scheme is good for public events, the open space will be significantly less. With all the new housing coming to town, more and less open space is required. It's an overhauser, even the town council say so. The design is ill-fought through, the Elms Road is a rat-run and the design is dangerous with blind spots close to Childers Play Area. Aside from the supermarket development, only 12 new units are planned, are given planning permission and sought for a variety of uses including financial services. You could end up a lot more state agents and cash plus only a handful of charity shops. I think we've aimed at retail more than exploring this application here. It's only worked to garage and non-food retailers. This only works with large non-food retailers and private anchor stores such as the Oracle. It does not work with supermarkets where shoppers want to get their frozen food home ASAP. There is zero affordable housing at a time when the government is calling for inclusive communities and when there is a shortage of social housing. It is inconceivable that the scheme won't make a profit. Even the town council don't believe this scheme can't afford to provide social housing and concern that figures can't be verified. The already reported problems to see have been kept secret. The development is out of character for Woking. The height of the four-story buildings are excessive, creates a claustrophobic atmosphere and more akin to an urban park in big city. Plan has been rushed and important details have been missed. Did you know the regen team weren't even aware they had to provide return to division for the tennis course at a cost of three hundred and twenty thousand? Or they didn't realise the statutory notice advising of this scheme's impact in the conservation areas required? A hundred and seventy-two individuals and fifteen groups of trees are to be uprooted. This will have a devastating effect on water saving in an area already prone to water invasion. As a showstopper, did you know Audi have not said a pre-let on this scheme? Look at the screen, the evidence is there. Elmsfield as it was, the Anderson family intended Elmsfield to be holding perpetuities and open space for the use of the people of Wokingham. You've a moral duty to respect their wishes. Please reject this plan and application outright. Please reject the destruction concreted over of the last significant green space in the centre of our historic market town. Please vote for Wokingham, the people who actually want to live in the centre from now.
Thank you, thank you for being very prompt on your time. Now I'll call those supporting the application. So we've got Bernie Pitch, Stan Hetherington and Mark Ashwell. Will you be managing your six minutes between you?
Mr Chairman, committee members, thank you for the opportunity presented to you this evening. I'm Bernie Pitch, the Lead Officer of Regeneration, speaking in favour of the application. Alongside me stand Hetherington and further on councillor Mark Ashwell, Deputy Lead Member for Regeneration. You will be aware that the application before you has provoked some discussion amongst the community and has evolved over many years in response to consultation with local residents and businesses, with leading commercial and residential advisers and with the retail market. It has also involved an ongoing and detailed pre-application process with the planning authority. We are confident that this application is compliant with county policy and provides for the sustainable growth intended. The development of Elmsfield is firmly rooted within the core strategy, which identifies the need for regeneration and the infrastructure required to support such significant local growth. It is also included in the MDD, we specifically allocated sites, and within the town centre master plan, which identifies in detail how it should be delivered and key objectives for a successful town centre. Those objectives include its thriving town centre, an eighteen-hour economy with streets as places, spaces to breathe and a need to set the design standard. Having a dual role as developer and council, we have a greater responsibility to achieve as far as possible all of the master plan objectives for a successful and sustainable town centre. The application before you does this. In addition, the application has been developed to align and balance the views of those consulted with, including purchasing additional land to increase the amount of open space in the scheme, retaining more trees, delivering high-quality design for all users, reducing the mass of development including a smaller food store, less retail floor space, a lower number of new homes, new leisure and entertainment uses such as a boutique cinema, cafes and restaurants near the park and new public spaces. The application is market-facing and viable. There is already great interest from the market for the scheme, even before we have started actively marketing it. We are nearing the end of process to secure operations for the food store, the hotel and the cinema. We are receiving great interest in the retail units placing apart from a range of quality retailers. This is a very encouraging position to be in and by achieving alignment with much of the public opinion, remaining attractive to the market and being aligned with this council planning policy is one which gives us great confidence in Wokingham's success.
Good evening, I'm Stan Hetherington, I've been a resident of our town for twenty-six years, so I'm a proud newcomer. I have worked on my son's company to community life and I'm actively involved in many of Wokingham's events. I've been a town councillor since 2011 to 2015. I've worked in the property development industry for over forty years and I was an adviser to one of the three shortlisted developers who were seeking the position of regeneration manager. I've discussed this development with literally thousands of residents over the years and most of all want this development. They want it because they want to live in a thriving and dynamic town. Do I like this proposal one hundred percent? No, I don't. It would be naive of me to expect this application to reflect my views one hundred percent. Do I believe this proposal will be good for our town? Yes, I do, one hundred percent. It reflects the requirement and aims of the council's much debated and adopted town centre master plan. It will transform Elmsfield from what it is today, three disjointed fields, into a proper town centre park capable of holding bigger and better events, a park that we can all be proud of. This development will enhance the attractiveness of Wokingham to both its residents and visitors. It will deliver us with the range of town centre facilities that we deserve. This proposal will attract the occupiers of all sizes to our town. They will enhance our town centre, not detract from it. There's a natural resistance to change, but change is what every generation has done and how our generation's turn has come.
So, the choice is ours, regeneration or degeneration. Our procrastination over the past decades has led to the degeneration of our, excuse me, our principal town. It's been there for all of us to see. During degeneration, business slides backwards and worst of all, there follows a lack of confidence in our Wokingham brand. Save Elmsfield. How about save our souls? Sooner or later, we'll need to send out a Wokingham SOS. Our community says, you've been talking about this for years, it's never going to happen. Our community is pleading with us to get on with it, to take responsibility and regenerate now. We have the policy in place, our master plan is well considered and robust. There are no issues we do not understand. We're aware of the pros and we're aware of the cons. If there were no cons, there'd be no decisions to make and therefore the time has come for us to decide. This is our job, it's what we're here for. It's our duty not to procrastinate, to delay, to leave for some future council. All we have to do is make our minds up and show yet the ability and the determination to get on with it. Regeneration is the only way forward. Regeneration sends out the correct messages to the market, motivating business and consumer alike. Our regeneration would deliver a great place to live, flourish and do business. Wokingham has no God-given right to be a premier community, we have to work at it. Perhaps fall out over it, but eventually we have to agree, take action and move forward. By supporting this planning application, we put a marker down to get on with it, to take pride in our desire to retain our status as one of the country's premier communities. It is all of our responsibility. Mr Chairman, this planning application will truly save Elmsfield.
Right, now we come on to the board members. We have Philip Murphy, board member for Embrook, who can be speaking on this. Bob Wyatt, who is board member of Westcott, is unfortunately indisposed. And I believe Philip, he's asked you to speak on behalf as well. So you're primarily speaking on your behalf and also some points for councillor Wyatt.
Thank you Chairman, good evening members. We are accused of not listening to our residents, yet every week when I talk to them, my father greater majority have been telling me to get on with regeneration. I could have no better confirmation than that of my vote last May, when I stood on the regeneration ticket in which I included Elmsfield and received such a substantial majority of their votes. The growth of the STLs around our town mean we have needed to react positively and grow the future of all our residents, new and old. Local residents and businesses continue to tell the council that the town centre desperately needs improving. That Wokingham in its current state does not offer them anywhere near the quality or choice of experience they expect. Living here in that town, I would agree with them. Talking to my ward residents, I believe Wokingham should no longer be a town that fails to meet expectations, but needs to become the type of town which exceeds its residents' aspirations. Wokingham needs to become a town centre which stands out, delivering the variety, choice and quality of facilities so currently lacking, but also offering something special, something uniquely Wokingham. It also needs to support the level of growth which will happen over the coming years with over thirteen and a half thousand new homes coming to the area, with many of these around Wokingham itself. To me, that means delivering proposals which build on the strength of what makes Wokingham a great place to live and do business in. All of this is clearly set out in the local plan and other planning policy which guides how the town should change. Over the years, I've listened closely to what our residents have asked or from their town centre and I believe these proposals before you deliver that, deliver the town centre they need. Yes, the park is important and these proposals address this. Retain a large open space at the heart of the designs with improved planting, a better play area, facilities for events and spaces for relaxation, all things our residents have asked for. But the park is only part of what our residents desire. They've asked for improved sports and leisure facilities, for entertainment offerings such as a cinema, for a better variety of shops in the town centre, including a better range of independent leash and national names. They've asked for flexible space where they can meet with friends, relax and socialise, or spaces where they can organise community events such as the Mayfair, specialist markets, they open their cinema, the concerts and all the events which make Wokingham so special. All of these are delivered by this much-needed regeneration. Above all, it should be remembered that the proposals for Elmsfield do not stand alone. They should not be viewed in isolation and are part of an overarching regeneration of the town centre, which will benefit all residents and businesses in the area. The regeneration will create jobs for those who live in the town, bring money into the local economy, create homes for our families and loved ones to live in and help meet the aspirations for a proper town centre experience for generations to come. This is what my board members tell me they want and this is what they tell me they need. This is why the most common comment from those who talk about it is simply and succinctly, just get on with it. Now Chairman, I would like to talk on behalf of Bob Cool, unfortunately has had a serious fall at home. And this is his words. As a town, we are continuously in the news as one of the best places to live in the country. And if our residents are going to live the quality of lives we believe they deserve, it's important we can remain so. Wokingham is known for the quality of our local education, our employment opportunities, the health and wellbeing of our residents and the enviable location at the heart of the Thames Valley. We are known for the strength of our community and have become famous for the way people gather for events such as the annual fairs and carnivals, the festivals and celebrations such as the jubilee. What Wokingham is not known for is the quality of our town centre as a place to come to shop or find entertainment. Residents continue to tell me they won't go, don't come into Wokingham or go elsewhere because they cannot get what they need here in our town centre. Too little choice, nothing to do, not the right shops are often mentioned. Walking around the town on a daily basis, I continue to see a decline. Fewer people out on the street shopping and many local businesses struggling with several independents having closed their doors, unable to make a living. Our once thriving market is a shadow of what it was before with traders struggling and needing a better location. Wokingham desperately needs this regeneration to happen if it is to become a great town centre the residents deserve, offering them the things they need on their doorstep rather than having to travel to Marlow and Henley. Having lived in Wokingham for nearly fifty years, I have continued to see the town centre change. Change can be seen as something negative or something to be feared, but it does not have to be. Change is at the heart of what a town centre should be. It needs to adapt and evolve to meet the needs of the local community. The proposals before you tonight are a positive step in creating a town centre that local residents can be proud of. A proper town centre, one which offers local people improved variety and quality of shops, of leisure, of entertainment and of community. I urge you to support these proposals. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. So that concludes those registered to speak. Before we come on to hear from members of the planning committee, I think it would be useful if we get some answers and clarification on some of the issues raised by the town council and also by those who raised objections on the application. So first, I'm not sure who's going to take these, I'll throw them over to you and you can decide. Importance attached to trees, I think that were identified as T60 and T65. Are there critical reasons why they can't be retained?
The issue was raised by the town council. The trees that were proposed to be removed because of their proximity to the road and the arboricultural advice was that they couldn't be successfully retained. One of the particular was not particularly, growing in particularly good form, would like to be made unstable. If it was trying to be retained, it would be requiring quite extensive works to do that and it would be unlikely to be successful. I think the town council's suggestion was that it should just be sort of, cut through the roots and let it try its luck. But the arboricultural advice was very clear that that was unlikely to be successful and you'd have a risk of a dangerous tree adjacent to the highway.
Okay, we also heard from the town council about the impact on Albert Road properties, but I suggest we cover those with the other points that the Albert Road residents raised. The affordable housing, the viability issue. Just for clarity here, the vast majority of development in Wokingham has to provide affordable housing and the percentage of that varies according to policy and where the application is. In this case, the council, as with any applicant, has to provide information as to why that is not affordable. But that's affordable for them as the developer. And the council has provided information which is, I must stress, independently assessed, not by the council. By the same organisation that independently assess those from other developers, again, not by the council. And they concluded that the Elmsfield proposal that we're considering tonight is not achievable if affordable housing is included. I remember, remind members of the planning committee that around, I think it was just after Christmas, we visited, just before Christmas, we visited a site at the Enditory Road where two large houses are being demolished and I think about thirty-five affordable, thirty-five elderly people's houses are being created. And that particular developer, the council, submitted information that confirmed to our satisfaction that that was not a viable proposition if there was affordable housing provided at the minimum level. So, do you want to add a comment?
I'm not sure, actually a great deal I can add to what you've already said, Chairman. I think the policy is very clear that the affordable housing requirement is subject to viability and it's open for the developer to make a viability case which will be independently assessed, as has been done in this case. And the advice we've had is that there isn't any leeway to provide affordable housing either on-site or off-site. And I think more clear than that that the scheme wouldn't be coming forward at all if it was being brought forward under the market if the council was taking the lead and that it is able to happen at all.
Okay, and the final thing we heard from the town council was concerns about the cinema, its D2 and whether hours would be satisfactorily restricted. I'm not sure whether that is, this is obviously something that could be included in the planning condition, but it's something I guess that also normally covered in terms of environmental house by noise, but could you comment on that please?
That's right, licensing would also cover a use like that. We haven't recommended a condition on the hours of use at the moment because of the flexibility that an operator would be liable to require to provide the service that people would expect. But there is a condition, condition thirty, that requires details of the design, the fabric of the building so that the use within it wouldn't cause any disturbance. And as you say, I think licensing would also cover activity within it.
So we now address the issues raised by the residents from Albert Road. There was the issue of the SPD master plan versus the three or four-storey properties. The fact that the properties are fourteen metres high, concerns about the lack of a BRE assessment and whether the twenty-two metres was the appropriate. I believe one of the speakers mentioned that other councils apply a different policy. Obviously, this is Wokingham Borough Council, we have to apply our own policies, we can't create new policies on the fly. Could you comment on those please? Could you comment on those please?
I think regarding to the height, there are two slightly separate issues. One is character and one is the impact on neighbouring properties, and the SPD does give us guidance regarding the height of development, but that doesn't mean that anything else is out of the question. And I think the, I mean, you'll see from the CGI that I showed in the presentation earlier about the appearance of development, you've got elements like roof terraces, so the top floor accommodation is set back, which will reduce its impact, the whole form and design with the articulation of the building. And then also the fact that a lot of the houses, although they appear four-storey from the front, have very limited accommodation at the rear, and so the design is such that there are either no top floor windows or there are limited top skill glazed bathroom windows, so that will reduce their apparent impact from seeing from the rear, which then leads on to the assessment of the relationship with the neighbouring properties. I think the Borough Design Guide sets out a minimum and a desirable additional separation between tall buildings, and I think I've gone through in quite a bit of detail, looked at all of the relationships in the report, and the majority of them are back to flank, where you would expect a lesser separation. It's the views of over gardens or oblique views. It's only the direct views where you have a really perpendicular back-to-back relationship, where the back-to-back standard would apply, and for the reasons I've set out in the report, that the limited places where that direct relationship occurs, and on balance that the impact is acceptable.
Okay. Just to be really clear about that, was reference to the distance to boundaries of properties, the measures we're using are building to building rather than building to boundaries, so that it could be greater of the distance.
Yes.
Thank you. And the issue about BRE.
Yes, there's a sort of three-step process to the BRA assessment. The first step is the twenty-five degree roof fund which is set out in the Borough Design Guide, but following on from that, there are much more technical assessments, the first of which is a vertical skyline assessment, and in fact, the environmental statement that encompasses the application went straight to that test, so it's carried out a detailed technical assessment of the impact on all the development around and actually within the development, and it shows that the impact on nine and fourteen Albert Road is acceptable. I think there are a few question marks for the ones in Denmark Street which I've already spoken about.
Okay. Thank you. Then the other objector spoke about, um, the platform for you Chris.